To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good morning, everybody. Today is May seventeenth, twenty twenty-three for our regular session. We have a ordinance that will be opening up at ten fifteen. We have a timed item at ten thirty with the road use agreement with Obsidian. And then this afternoon at one o'clock, we'll have another coordination call with Obsidian Solar, considering the Obsidian Solar site certificate. Are there any other additions or deletions to the agenda?
Yeah, so we have OHA agreement one seven oh seven one three dash one, community justice lease with Warner Mountain Properties. And you've covered the coordinated call with EPSEC, and I have a search and rescue vehicle purchase. And then we have deletions of Lake County Vehicle Use Policy Resolution twenty twenty-three dash three, contract to legal projects discussion and.
Sounds good. Okay, so first thing in order of business is we have open for public comment. Anybody like to give a public comment? All right. Then we will move through our list. And we'll start off with. Not sure what this twenty-one CS, that's bunch number is dash zero twelve.
Oh, that's the.
Mr. Greer's amendment to his forest service contract. It extends it for a year and then adds a thousand dollars.
Okay. That one.
Chair, I can go ahead and make a motion to approve the USDA Forest Service Agreement with Lake County with a fiscal impact of nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents.
And I will second that motion. It has been moved and seconded to approve the agreement with Lake County and USDA Forest Service in the amount of nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents. Any discussion?
No, sir.
As we discussed yesterday in work session, I believe this was for travel.
Additional travel.
Additional travel. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We'll continue on then with Lake County LCCJ and Warner Mountain Properties.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the agreement with Warner Mountain Properties and Lake County corrections for fiscal impact of around eight hundred and fifty dollars a month or ten thousand five hundred dollars per year.
Now we'll second that. We've got a motion and a second to approve the Lake County Community Justice and Warner Mountain Properties Agreement for eight hundred and fifty dollars a month or ten thousand five hundred per year. Any discussion?
Only discussion, Jake is here with us today to answer any questions if there are any, but we had a really good discussion yesterday. You guys are needing a location for a house. This may result in some cost savings, but overall it's going to suit our needs and it's, you know, not to get into the weeds, you know, it's not too much. It's single gendered homes that right now they have two women, I believe is what you were saying, that are going to be utilizing this building. There's a lot of restrictions on who can live there and who can't. So I feel very comfortable with this agreement.
The alternative is putting them in motels, which can get very expensive.
Correct.
Oh, boy, eight hundred bucks a week or eight hundred bucks for two weeks.
Yeah.
And I have a house for a month. For more than just for three people, up to three people. And just disclaimer, this has nothing to do with the housing proposal that's going on in the South End, the towns of all, but this has absolutely nothing to do with that.
Correct.
And we've never had, we've never, really, I'm, we had conversations about the walkers dislocation down here. I have not been involved with any conversation, so.
Correct.
There was something out there on social media, the police and probationers, you're gonna live in there? That's not the case.
Right. Kind of love social media. All right. Any other discussion?
No.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
And the Community Service Work Agreement was approved?
Yes.
You're good to go.
Hustled right through it.
What's that?
Said we hustled right through it. You can leave now.
Okay, next up is the Oregon Health Authority Agreement, one six nine five one eight dash thirteen.
That provides additional funding for public health that can be spent through twenty twenty-seven for staffing and modernization.
Got two of them. I just want to make sure I'm making the motion on the right one here. Where's the number?
Right up here at the top. See that?
Oh. Okay, got it. All right. So this is the one, yeah, this is the one with the larger rollover dollars into the, into the next fiscal year. It's gonna result in about eighty-three thousand dollars being available for the infrastructure funding. And they actually, I was looking at that yesterday, and they actually have until, if I'm not mistaken, it's on the next page, page five. I think they have until two thousand twenty-seven to spend those dollars. Yeah, these funds are available from December of twenty-two through November of twenty-seven. And a number, and some of these are rollover.
Infrastructure funding?
Correct. All right, I will go ahead and make the motion to approve Agreement one six nine five one eight dash thirteen.
All right, we'll second that. It's been moved and seconded to approve Oregon Health Agreement one six nine five one eight dash thirteen. It's the thirteenth amendment to the Oregon Health Authority, twenty twenty-one through twenty-three, intergovernmental agreement for financing of public health services. Has a financial impact of eighty-three thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Any further discussion?
Just the impact is positive.
This will help them when they move to their new facility.
Correct.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next OHA Agreement, seventeen oh seven thirteen.
So I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve Agreement one seven zero seven one three dash one for the Oregon Health Authority Agreement.
And I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded to approve Oregon Health Authority Agreement one seven zero seven one three, First Amendment to Oregon Health Authority Intergovernmental Agreement for Environmental Health Services. Ends in July, one twenty-three.
Correct.
Ending in June thirtieth of twenty-nine.
Correct. And the only other discussion would be that the, the fee for the pool and spa program went from the forty-five dollars for the licensing to ninety. So it's about a double.
Pool spa program. All right, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, IT Service Contract Renewal.
Do you want it? Do you want it too?
Sure.
So this is a renewal of services for contracted, it's IT services. The total fiscal amount hasn't changed from this current year.
So we, and we discussed a little bit of this yesterday and just making sure that there was an appropriate termination clause.
And this was creeping up on us to expire, I mean, thirtieth.
Right.
If we didn't, if we don't update it, then we could be running out of agreements.
Right. Okay. I can make a motion to approve the technical support agreements with Actech Solutions Incorporated in Lake County as presented.
And I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded to approve the technical support agreement with Actech in Lake County as presented. And the fiscal impact is a hundred and ten thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars per year. Any further discussion? As mentioned yesterday, we've seen what happened to Curry County, getting crashed and them having to start over with everything. You know, having this technical support is very valuable to Lake County and cannot go without it.
Right. I think the only other thing I would add then is just, since I've been here, it's been an ongoing conversation about what our options would be with IT. And I think they're limited, certain, but it's just something to maybe tune about in the future. And I'm hoping that there's some opportunity that presents itself in the future for going maybe a different direction with IT.
Or at least.
Maybe altering course. I don't know.
It's just, it would be good to have some more competition.
Some options.
Okay. All right, any other discussion? Hearing done, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, it is now ten fifteen. We will open up our ordinance fifty-two hearing. And if I can find my paperwork on that.
This is the Lake County Assessor's ordinance along with the clerk's office are updating some of their fees. My understanding is one of the only things that's changing at the clerk's office is that they are now they are now charging for some services that weren't being charged for before. They was, they were working off of in prior years, the previous clerk assistant, she had a certification that she was able to provide a service to the public for. And the fees that she collected were mainly just to cover the cost of her licensing. But now we are actually adopting an actual fee for that service being that our new clerk assistant has that same certification. And we are just running that fee officially through the clerk's office because I feel like it's just a lot more clean rather than the perception of someone operating business out of the clerk's office. I don't think there was any, any issue there, but I just think it's a much better way of doing it. And actually having it formally adopted in our fee schedule. The assessor's office is they're updating their sales data, their research fee along with county address lists and delinquent tax list fees. And it just hasn't been done in a long time, so.
So for the record, these are ordinance fifty-two dash, or point one oh one, fifty-two dash point one oh three.
Correct.
We'll keep it open, and this will be the first of two hearings?
This is our second.
This is our second.
Yeah, Mark and I opened up the first.
Okay.
Hearing in Silver Lake.
That's why I did not recall.
Yeah, I know. It just occurred to me. No worries.
Okay, second hearing. Any comment? All right, we'll keep that open for the time being. All right, back to our list. Transit RFQs.
I have two RFQs for transit purchases. We have a grant that funds this completely. There is a match, but the state provides that. There were several issues, not with Lake County, but procurement. The federal procurement policy is very rigid and so O.R.A. has hired someone to do procurements for smaller agencies like ours. So this is the first step going forward.
This will help purchase two vehicles, is that correct?
Yep. They want a side entry and rear entry vehicle.
Okay.
Both category.
All right. Okay, all right.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the Transit RFQs document for fiscal impact of one hundred and six thousand dollars.
I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded to approve the Transit RFQs with Lake County for a fiscal impact of one hundred and six thousand dollars. This includes grants from the state. Okay, any other final discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Search and rescue vehicle purchase. This is an added item.
So I received a call this morning from Hall Motor Company. They will have a vehicle available in July and they asked if we wanted it. We've been having trouble with this specific model. And this is the one that we're looking for. I spoke to the deputy that will be using it and he is in agreement that this is what he wants. I spoke to the undersheriff and he approved of this quote. I called legal counsel this morning because I believe this would be a single source purchase under Rule Eight. And I have not heard back from her yet on that, but I think it would be a great opportunity. They said we don't have to take it. They'll find someone to take it very easily. They just wanted us to have the first chance.
Okay, this is the vehicle that is, was planned in previous fiscal year.
Yeah, and we carried it over to this next year. It'll be here in July and it's been budgeted for.
Been budgeted for for a couple of years, yeah. The current deputy is running on a vehicle that has over two hundred thousand miles on it.
Yes.
Yeah. I don't know. I mean, it's, it's been budgeted for, so on one side of my mind, you know, I'm just implying to go ahead and move forward with it because it's, I, I don't know if it's gonna get any easier to get vehicles in the future. So being that it's there, it's, it's already being built and so forth. I guess going back to a conversation that I had with the undersheriff, wanting to make sure that if this was going to be used for search and rescue, if this is going to be used for emergency management, does it really need a lot of the same bells and whistles than an actual full scale police vehicle does? And maybe there's some cost savings there. Melanie told me this morning that she did speak with undersheriff B. H., and he's perfectly fine with this. I think a lot of those considerations that we would have in looking for cost savings is gonna take place in the upfitting of the vehicle. Like not having the, the prisoner cage in the backseat, things like that.
Expensive bumpers.
Right. As long as the bumper's not included in this.
It'll be something.
Right. So anyway, yeah, just, that's something I figured I'd bring up for consideration in the future when we move forward with the upfitting of this vehicle. Because I think it should be handled differently than the other patrol vehicles.
The reason it's a one-time vehicle is that, you know, it's potentially gonna pull that snow cap that's very heavy and you get over GBW real quick if you have a lighter vehicle.
Right.
And considering that the current vehicle has, what, two fifteen, two twenty now on it?
It's had two twenty-five last.
Two twenty-five last month. You know, the odds of it having future mechanical or going to increase.
And that'll be cascaded to search and rescue. It'll still have useful life. It just won't have daily use like this one. And if you look around outside with all of these search and rescue folks here, the majority of the vehicles are the same model because they opt in haul equipment for searches.
So we, is it actually in consideration for the day?
Yeah, it is.
Are you entertaining the motion?
Well, entertaining the motion to purchase the vehicle presented before us for search and rescue slash EMS, which is an F three fifty four by four crew cab pickup with the purchase price of fifty-eight thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars.
So I moved.
You second it?
I, I thought you were entertaining the motion. I'll, I'll second the motion if, if that was a motion.
That was a motion.
Okay.
I thought you were asking me to make.
Oh, no, I just, I thought you were entertaining one and so I just.
No, I missed right there.
All right.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Let's not leave. We'll come now. Okay. AOC dues.
Oh, lovely. So we had a discussion on this yesterday. Due to some changes within the association, it's resulted in a reduction, a significant reduction in our dues to the association. We had some discussion about whether or not we would pay thirteen five, thirteen thousand five hundred yesterday. I don't know what your thoughts are on that now.
Yeah, that was, so, so previous year we paid over sixteen thousand. Got to go for twelve thousand, ten dollars. Thirteen nine, I believe, nine ninety-nine was, about fourteen thousand was a fifteen percent reduction, which was similar to what we've asked folks to do. Our budget, if you were good with an even number, you're talking about an even number.
Yeah.
Thirteen or thirteen five.
Yeah.
Whatever you feel is appropriate, I will probably second it.
Okay. Yeah, and we had budgeted actually for a significant increase even. I'm not sure what, how things are gonna shake out through the formula and the due structure. So what was it, Melanie? You said you budgeted for about twenty thousand?
And then Commissioner, you mentioned that if we pay above what is being asked, it may help with future discussions with AOC members.
Other counties.
That, hey, Lake County is pulling its share. Try to keep AOC going strong.
Exactly. Yep. Well, with that, I'll just go ahead and I'll make a motion to approve the AOC dues for thirteen thousand five hundred. Pay, never do, you have time, Melanie.
I'll second that motion. It's been moved and seconded to approve our AOC dues for thirteen thousand five hundred dollars. Which is a reduction of over twenty-five hundred dollars from last year.
Right.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right.
So really, the only thing we have left is the ordinances and then meeting minutes?
Yeah.
Just going through the motions today.
It's almost ten thirty. Don't know, are we gonna get somebody else on here?
I'm expecting possibly two people.
Two people to join us? Oh.
Speaking of which.
We'll go ahead and approve the meeting minutes if you want.
Yeah, okay. About approving meeting minutes?
I'll go ahead and approve the minutes from five to twenty-three work session and the five three regular session along with five nine special session.
I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded to approve five two twenty-three work session, five three twenty-three regular session and five nine twenty-three special session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Boy, it is almost ten thirty, ten twenty-eight. Hi, Lori, how are you?
Oh, we can't hear you.
That's great.
Gotcha.
I'm good, mom, thank you.
Good. Continue.
We'll go ahead and open up our ten thirty timed item for road use agreement with Obsidian. And maybe one other person's coming on, maybe?
Kirk might join us.
Okay, is Kirk joining us?
No, it'll just be me in. If I need him, I'll just pull him in here. He can just join on my computer.
Okay, all right. Well, if we don't see him, tell him hi. So I'll just go ahead and I'll kick us off here. Lori, we've done a lot of work on this road use agreement. We've kicked it back and forth quite a bit over the years and I really appreciate your patience and I hope you understand, you know, just the, the challenges that we've struggled with throughout the, the structuring of this. It'd be, this will, this will officially be potentially our first road use agreement in Lake County for any kind of development. The elements I just want to pull out here, in previous meeting, we decided we were going to take elements of the actual dust abatement plan and put them only within the exhibits. And we've done that, we brought it back. There were some minor spelling changes. Can you pull out anything else that we had made changes on that might have been significant or might have questions on? or might have questions on?
The, the only other main thing that we did was, we sort of helped shape the agreement so that, uh, we were trying to...
So?
Uh, connect, act it. We must have one agreement that works for every, on your exhibits, and so just because the project is gonna be regulated by, uh, EPSEC, we wanted to make sure that, to get the fact that if a project is under EPSEC and the county should need to amend for any reason for EPSEC. So, that was the only other big wording change that we made. So that your form agreement now contemplates either a county jurisdiction project or an EPSEC jurisdiction project. Um, and so that was the, that's the only other main change.
Okay, um, you were breaking up just a little bit there, but I think we got the majority of what you were saying. It, it came back in and out just twice. The... I guess I, I would, I would ask if, Commissioner Schulenberger, do you have any questions on this?
No, I don't, I really don't have any questions at this time.
And Lori, you and I also have spoke about the fact that there's likely going to be a need, and I wanna make sure I stress this, for, um, the amend, for amendments to be made to this agreement going forward. Um, there's likely going to be some changes, there's likely going to need to be some room, flexi, uh, some need for flexibility and room for adjustment. Uh, whether it be the road construction plan and route, uh, that trucks take, and, um, also just kind of capturing, uh, how things are going to be built. Later today, we have, uh, a meeting with the Oregon Department of Energy regarding the site certificate, and there's going to be some amendments there. So, I, I could foresee a number of reasons why we would want to have this an ongoing conversation and in many ways, a living document that we can, we can work with you guys on.
Yeah, I, I think that's right, um, and I could just give one example. We have a temporary water rate that we're working on getting, so we may be able to pull water to maintain the project out of our own wells. Right now, we've contemplated that water will be coming from somewhere else, but if, you know, if in the event that we need to get water from Christmas Valley, as an example, that's not contemplated in the road agreement the way it sits right now. We've identified our main construction route as basically coming from, as if you were coming from Lake Pine to the project. Uh, so that's just one example of how things could change, and we'll just have to play it by ear to see whether the contribution that we're making on the roads that we've identified that we're definitely gonna impact, you know, will suffice, you know, we'll, we'll have, as, as things go on, we'll have more specificity on where and how many trucks are coming, from which direction, and if that's a significant change to what we've said we're gonna do. So that's one example of how, how I could envision that things are just gonna, we're gonna have to sort of stay in communication and keep this a living document, as you said.
Right, and I think that's actually a really good point that, you know, this, this agreement has been done in good faith, uh, that, and an understanding that, you know, we're, it's going to be a working relationship, uh, moving forward. And yes, like, there may be a need for trucks to go a different route if you're hauling water per se from Christmas Valley, and some of those are adjustments that have to be made in a moment. Um, whether it be, you know, even emergency issues or something, you know, you end up needing to run trucks a different route. A lot of those things we can, you know, I would, I would foresee us, you know, taking into account the, the positive impacts that we're making on those other roads and accounting for those. So maybe it doesn't necessarily mean that we have to adopt a whole new road construction route and look at upgrading all these roads just because we have some trucks drive on them. But if there are damages, or something happens, or someone is hauling, you know, loads way overweight, and it causes problems within the road and elsewhere, that's something that we can come back and have a conversation about and, and address. So, um, just, I really appreciate your willingness to work on this for over a year now on building this, uh, agreement.
Well, counting COVID, I think we've been working on it for about three or four years.
Yeah, it's true.
But that's on us.
I, I don't know if it was three, it was three years straight, but I feel, I feel in many ways it felt like at least a year straight, so.
Yeah, I think once we cut down the actual, putting actual words on paper, it's been about a year.
That's good. Alright, I don't know if you have any other questions with that?
I think it's very fair agreement. You know, we'll see what we missed when we get started, I guess.
Right. And that's, that's just it, is that I most fully anticipate that there's going to be things that...
There will be another one, you know.
Right?
So, this will be a good example of what worked or what didn't work. Appreciate Lori and Obsidian for trying to pound this out for us to get to a good solution.
Yeah. Yeah, I know, I know that we've stressed page quite a bit with this, this road use agreement over the time. I've been quite the pest, so. Alright, um, are we taking action on this today?
Well, I think we should, yeah.
Alright. I will move forward and go ahead and approve the road use agreement between Lake County and Obsidian Renewables as presented.
I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded to approve the road use agreement between Lake County and Obsidian Renewables as presented. Any final discussion?
No, sir.
All those little favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Lori.
Thank you, I, I just, I guess one final note, um, I, would all three commissioners sign this? Uh, I noticed that the version we have for you only has one line for the county to sign.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I believe, I believe we were trying to keep it simple and just keeping it to, um, one signature from the chair.
Okay.
Um, or vice chair, whoever is present. We, we could alter that, uh, but, uh, I'm fine with it just being one signature. If it's run through, it has to be run through a meeting regardless.
Yeah.
So. Yeah.
Is there any significance to three signatures versus one?
No.
I will do what is, whatever you guys want.
What do you want?
Well, we just approved it as presented.
Yeah, I, that's, that's fine. I mean, like, I, that's, again, like, those kind of things never really came up in the past in terms of, you know, how many signatures are on the page. Uh, usually, yeah, when, when all three commissioners sign something that's on like a resolution, meeting minutes, or a letter. Um, agreements are very standard to have at least just the chair's signature. Or a vice chair or whoever.
Okay. Think we're good?
Okay.
Alright. Any other updates you would like to give us at this time?
Uh, no, I sent to all three of you and as well as Darwin, and I had a conversation with Darwin yesterday, just a quick summary of what's up with the amendment, which I know you're gonna have a meeting on later today. Um, pretty straightforward. I think the main, the item that you might wanna understand better is that we've added a hundred and sixty-nine acres. Um, we don't intend, we only intend to use less than twelve of that hundred and sixty-nine acres. Um, but it does impact a pivot. And we do have a letter from the Dinsdale's affirming that they will move their, you know, they're retaining the water rate and they intend to move, you know. Realistically, that keeps us outside of a goal exception, but realistically, they're gonna move, they're gonna have to move water because we're gonna place a substation right in the middle of their pivot. Um, so anyway, I think that's the main thing to understand is we, uh, but it's the cost, we added a whole hundred and sixty-nine acres to the project boundary. Um, uh, but we intend to site within that hundred and sixty-nine acres, and it will impact a pivot, but the water will be moved to a new location, um, once we exercise the option on the land. I think the other changes are all fairly, um, you know, they're either technical or, or just, you know, just sort of conforming to how the design actually rolled out.
Right. And Dinsdale was where the, oh, yeah, and actually, I think Dinsdale's been wanting to move that pivot for a long time. It's kinda goofy. It's got, um, those large, um, what, is that a, uh, one K, is a, um, one fifteen KV line that's going through there, Lori?
Uh, it's got, it's got the three five hundred KV lines going through there, so yeah, it's not quite, it's just a little greater than a half a pivot.
Right.
So it's got, it's got a, yeah, kind of a funny shape.
Yeah, so it kinda hits the one, and then it's gotta turn around and come back and hits the other one, so it doesn't even make a full, you know, three quarters. So, uh, he, and he's got lots of, um, land in other areas that he can move. And he, he typically does rotate and, uh, rotate his fields and divots, so.
Alright. Well, I think that's it then.
Yep. Um, are you gonna be joining us at one o'clock when Odo, uh, joins us?
I don't believe we've received an invitation to that, um.
Okay.
So, I, I wonder if they are, if they are just wanting to consult with you in, in your role as, um, advisory to this.
Most likely.
But I'm happy to join if you feel like, you know, if, if it turns out that I should be there.
Well, if, if, uh, if it turns out that you need to be there, uh, I'll, we'll hold Odo on the line and we'll, uh, we'll send you some mad text messages a little after one o'clock.
Yeah, text, I'll, I'll make sure I'm near a computer at one o'clock today, just in case.
Alright, sounds good.
Okay. Well, thank you. Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
What's the plan for ordinance? Should we make one more ask? Got any comment? Any public comment on ordinance fifty-two point one oh one or fifty-two point one oh three?
I know we have one person online, but, he's not raising his hand, or?
Okay. Hearing none. I could go ahead and close the ordinance. And ordinances and take action consideration.
Alright. Um, do we approve these separately or just approve ordinance fifty-two as?
Separately, please.
Separately?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Alright, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the updated ordinance fifty-two point one zero one in the matter of Lake County assessors' fee schedule.
I'll second that motion. It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance fifty-two point one oh one, assessors' fee schedule. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Alright, and I'll go ahead and make a second motion, uh, make a motion to approve ordinance fifty-two point one zero three in the matter of Lake County clerk fees.
I'll second that motion. It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance fifty-two point one oh three. Increase in Lake County clerk fees. Any final discussion?
No, sir.
All those favors signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All the ordinances are now passed. Is there any other business we need to cover this morning?
Just the one o'clock meeting.
Okay, we'll go into recess and resume at one PM.
And let you get back to work and just let me know.
Oh, you'll have to unmute quick. Alright, so we're back in session and, uh, for our regular session for May seventeenth. And our topic this afternoon is Lake County Coordination Call for the Amendment to Obsidian Solar Center Site Certificate. And Commissioner Williams, did you wanna lead off the discussion?
Yeah, sure, I can, I can kick it off mainly just, you know, thank you Kathleen for being here today. Um, and, uh, making this work, but I wasn't sure, we've never been through this process before. Um, so we're doing this in a public meeting because if, to have all three commissioners or several commissioners present as a majority, it was going to be much better to, uh, and more appropriate for us to just do it in our regular session rather than schedule another special session for this subject. So appreciate you accommodating us on that. The, uh, uh, site certificate, I guess, maybe if you could just kinda give us a brief, um, overview of what the applicant was requesting and some of the elements thereof, so we can get a best understanding, many, maybe any specific points that you're looking for us to give comment on?
Okay, so I'm unmuting myself again. Hopefully you can hear me. Okay, I'm gonna try to share my screen, um, it'll help if I can show you a couple of maps.
Well, you can, I'll make you host, will you make, uh, make me host after?
Yep.
So for the record, my name is Kathleen Sloan. I'm a senior citing analyst with the Oregon Department of Energy, and we requested this meeting with the Lake County Board of Commissioners today to get initial input and feedback on a request for Amendment One to the Obsidian Solar Center Site Certificate. Sorry, that was not well. Uh, can you see my screen? Have I shared anything with you?
Uh, not quite yet.
Okay. So hopefully, you will soon see the map.
I think she's promoted you to host, so have you clicked share? I think there should be a share feature there.
I have a share button. It looks like I'm sharing on screen two.
Okay.
Can you, can you see that?
No, not yet.
Okay, let me get in here again. Well, I'll keep talking while I work this out.
We do have several maps. Oh.
Okay.
There.
Ax.
Yes.
There is one more button, okay.
Alright.
So, the figure here is the figure two in request for Amendment One. Um, so I just wanted to put that up there as a visual. The council approved the site certificate for the Obsidian Solar Center in early twenty-twenty-two. This is the first request for the amendment, and we're in the initial stages of that amendment request. We received a preliminary request for Amendment One from the certificate holder. And what they are proposing requesting to do is reflected on this map. I, I'm gonna move over here with my pointer. Um, this area E is a hun, approximately a hundred and sixty-nine acres. They have requested to amend the site boundary to add that area E. And their reason for doing so, as stated in the request for Amendment One, is to possibly have an alternative, you know, possibly build a substation in the area E, but more importantly, it is to intertie with the BPA line that runs through there. And so there would be some modifications, upgrades to the transmission line, the above-ground transmission line, um, in order for them to do that interconnect on a BPA line. As currently approved, they have an approval to do it in this area D, which is already in the site certificate, which is where their transmission line was originally gonna run which is already in the site certificate, which is where their transmission line was originally going to run to connect to a PGE line. Um, I'm not an engineer and electrician, so I can't get into all the details of this in this call, but just so you know, that's the basic reason for the amendment request. The area in pink is their proposed requested, what we call a micro sighting corridor. And that is where the work would occur. And so they are requesting a site boundary adjusted judgment for the area in yellow, which is the total hundred and sixty-nine acres. The area that they're proposing to actually work in is the area in pink, which is not within the pivot circle, I just wanted to make that clear. And then based upon the property owner information that we have received, the landowner for both area D and area E is the same landowner. So this is all, and it's all one tax parcel, just so you know.
Right.
So, so for our coordination with Lake County, you were appointed as a special advisory group on the site certificate in the application phase of this project back when it was started years ago and approved in twenty twenty-two. So you would have been consulted by the department. That predates my time here, I started in twenty twenty-one. Um, but, and I was not the citing analyst that worked on the application, but she still works with us. She's just on another project. So you would have been consulted and were consulted by our department for, for input on the facility. But what we typically look and coordinate with the special advisory groups, which are the local governmental entities, um, is, is on land use and public services. And what we're consulting, coordinating with you about today, or at least starting that conversation, because this is the preliminary, so this is our first outreach to you as well, um, on this amendment request, is just to go over the project, make you aware of the amendment request, and start that conversation with you about it. And I'll stop there and, and see if you have any questions for me right now. But thank you for your time as well, glad to be here.
Like that. I guess one of the questions that I would just have, just off the top, is, um, the yellow, um, line there, the, the purple area that is in color only represents about half of that area, that is the amended site boundary. Why does the amended site boundary go halfway into a secondary pivot?
We have, it's a good question. And this will allow you to better understand our process. So as part of our review of the preliminary request for amendment, is we review all the documents that are submitted by the certificate holder and we identify requests for additional information or clarification or questions about what they have submitted. And we have a question, a clarifying question for them as well. And so what we will do is submit questions for them to answer in a revised request for an amendment. And, and, and some of it is, some of the purpose of this call with you today is to help identify any questions that you might have. So I will make note of that question and we will add it to our list of RAIs. Because at this time, I don't think that we know the answer to that question and the app, the certificate holder would be the one to answer it. But it is one of our RAIs, which is a request for additional information, that we send the certificate holder and based upon our review and our coordination. Because we coordinate with the, the other state agencies, the local government, to try to find out what the comments and questions would be on the documents submitted. So if that helps, I don't have an answer for you now, but I will make sure that it is noted that it was one of your questions.
Alright, that's perfectly fine. I, I was mainly just curious, do you have any questions?
I'd assume the landowner agreed to this.
I would also add that we have requested landowner letters as part of the revised RFA. It'll be in our request for additional information. We, we could probably assume that, but they didn't submit additional documentation to support that. So that's also something that we have asked for.
No, we're also seeing that on behalf of pivot.
Well, and, and so there's a pivot right underneath the pink. There's a part of a pivot. Um, and that, and it's not even a full three quarters of the pivot. And it's kind of disrupted because it can't make a full circle because of several power lines for that transmission line that runs right through the middle of it. But then, but the actual amended site boundary extends into half of a secondary pivot, which is just curious to me. It doesn't look like anything's due to be constructed. The micro sighting corridor isn't extending into that pivot. Um, so I, I just was kind of curious why the site boundary did. It's unusual, that's all. I, I just thought of it while I was sitting here looking at these maps and I just thought it would be worth discussing.
No, I'm, I'm glad, I'm glad that you brought it up and that I can make note of it and make sure that is, you know, that we note that that was also a question from the county.
Okay.
Because we think it's a, something that needs to be clarified as well. And then, oh, sorry.
No, please, go ahead.
I was going to scroll to another map, just so, um, you can see some of what we do. So the main, this is not to preclude or assume what the county may want to comment on or talk about, but in our typical project engagement, we coordinate with the special advisory group, particularly the counties, on land use and public services. Because land use, of course, falls within your jurisdiction and the planning department staff are usually who we coordinate with as well. Um, and, and we do that for the purposes of having, asking the county, the local government to identify for us their applicable substantive criteria. So part of our process, and we'll formalize this like in a request to you, um, but part of what we will seek input from the county on are any applicable substantive criteria that should apply to this project. Because the process, the certificate holder and the applicant, when they apply for a site certificate, gets to choose which rounds are going to go county or FSEC process for land use. We do the review, but we take the input from the local government and put it through the FSEC standard for land use. So we're not asking you to do our work for us, but we're asking for the information that, like the lands that the county would use if this was a project that lands through the planning department in Lake County. And that is usually identified, the requirements are usually permit-related if they're in ordinance and also the applicable substantive criteria as identified by the county. And so this process has already happened on the Obsidian Site Certificate when it went through review and was issued. And so as part of our amendment request, we're going to ask for, uh, like the county particularly to identify any changes that might have occurred in zoning or ordinance or applicable substantive criteria since the last review of council. Because that's one of the things we have to include in our, our documents as we ask for, you know, as we move this process through for council review. Because we're, as citing division staff, we're staff to the, the Energy Facility Citing Council for the State of Oregon. Our job is to compile the information, prepare the technical reports, do the analysis and make recommendations to our council. Our council makes the decision on a site certificate or amendment request. So we're support staff to the Energy Facility Citing Council. And I did just a team by Sarah Esserson, she's going to try to join the call.
Okay.
Um, you can promote her as well. She, she's much more knowledgeable about our ladies process than I am, but.
Well, you're, you're the host now, so you can actually promote her or, or.
Okay, okay, if I see, okay, if I see her pop up, I will, I'll let you know. And if, if I try to add her. But, um, this figure four, which hopefully is the one that, that shows you each standard, we're an evidence-based process, we put all applicants and amendment requests through a, a filter of these, these standards. And one of them is land use. And each standard has a different analysis area extent. And so for land use, you're seeing what is our standard analysis area, which is the half a mile. And that's the black and white checkered line around the site boundary and the requested amended site boundary. So when they go look at land use data that they have to provide us, this is already. I hear somebody.
Oh, uh, no, someone, someone was walking by the door here in our.
Oh, okay, okay. So that's the basis of the information that the applicant is requested, required to submit to us as a part of their review. So we're looking at it through that lens. Uh, and then similarly with zoning, they have the same lens that they have to, you know, analyze and report back on. So, so the reason, main reason I'm showing you this is just so you can see for yourself, like the universe that under our process, they are asked to evaluate and provide us information in their request for amendment. And our process will work this way more or less. They've submitted a preliminary amendment request, we review it. We either deem it complete or request additional clarifying information. And so that's where, where we're at, we're preparing those RAIs. We're engaging with our reviewing agencies right now to make sure that we're capturing the questions that we might have on this preliminary. And then we'll send it back to them for review and they will resubmit to us a revised version. We will review that again. And if we feel that everything that was requested of us in order for us to process this amendment request is submitted, we will deem it complete and that will be their formal request for amendment one. Then we issue a draft proposed order. We take all that information that they have to submit in that request and all those exhibits for our sixteen standards. They do their reports, update their analysis for the new area. Anything that has changed, we look for changes in factor law as we go through this process. And we prepare draft proposed order and that goes out for public comment. And we have a hearing. We'll be having a public hearing in your, your area for when the DPO has been issued. And so we call it DPO draft proposed order. So the draft proposed order has to be out for public comment review. It's usually thirty to forty-five days. We'll hold the public hearing at the end of that public hearing. That public comment period on that draft proposed order will end, it'll close. So after that, council will consider public comments on the draft proposed order. And then moving forward goes to council review. If council approves that draft proposed order, the department issues a proposed order. And we'll take all the input that we get in that draft proposed order public comment period in council comment. And we incorporate that in a proposed order, that we issue that. And at the end of that, there will be a final order that will go to council for decision. If they approve it and they will either grant the, the request for amendment to the site certificate or they will deny it. And that's up to them. You know, and I guess what I would say is we're at the initial stage. Input engagement is really important in our process. And so the, anything that you want to ask us about it, you know, I can take those questions. I can come back with more information. We can be directed to work with your planning department. There's all sorts of things that we can do as a department to coordinate with you in your review.
Okay. I, I, I'm just trying to work through this. Again, this is the first time I've been through the amendment process of a site certificate. So I'm trying to, uh, figure out exactly where the lines are. It's a little different than what I anticipated. I kind of figured this was going to be kind of a one and done. You were just looking for some comments and moving forward, but I'm, I'm, I'm really hesitant to like open up any kind of can of worms on especially like that five mile, um, analysis area. You know, and exactly what you're looking for within that five, or excuse me, not five mile, point five miles of, uh, analysis area, the perimeter of the actual site. The only thing that I can see from the original certificate, which my understanding was, was already approved.
It is.
Yeah, so the only thing that's really changing is that that perimeter is actually shrinking slightly on the west side of the, the, of the corridor there where the Genti line and the, uh, substation is placed. So, um, but everything else pretty much stays the same. Um, not sure what, what else to provide comment on. I kind of, I, I, I'm, I'm looking at it and I feel like it's pretty straightforward, I guess, is what my comments would be.
Okay.
Just, you know, moving that substation just slightly more to the interior. I, I'm curious about maybe the amended site boundary and why it's extending further to the east than, uh, than the actual micro sighting corridor is. But other than that, I'm, I'm probably good to go. I don't know if you've got any thoughts, Commissioner Shulman, or.
Just really haven't had enough time to review it.
Yeah, and I didn't, I don't know if either of us really knew that we were supposed to review this in its entirety or if there was other elements that we were supposed to go through.
Well, and that's, that's where I really wanted to stress, like this was the, the initial start of a, of a conversation if you want to have one. So if there is a desire that you have more time to review the documents that are available, they're all available online. Um, and also I, I can send them out to individuals via email if you're interested. I can do it to it, do that as well. Some of these are quite large, which is why we tend to post them online. They don't, they don't do well with emails. Um, but I didn't want to, want to convey like that we're asking you to like make some kind of formal decision or have formal comments. Basically, we're starting this process. If you want us to work with your planning director to get comments that they can bring back and have you approve, you know, that's often how we work. We're really, I'm really appreciative of your time and just your interest in what we're doing because community engagement is, is an important part of our process. And so I think you've made really good comments so far. And what I would say is expecting to, you know, hear back from us on, on additional information as it comes to us from that certificate holder, particularly in response to our request for additional information and, and some of the questions that we have, which are the same questions you have identified.
Right. Well, I guess maybe I would just start with maybe a couple of process questions. Um, for if we're, if, if we can, you know, if we continue to go through this or we see something that maybe pops out at us that, you know, we have some thoughts or questions on, uh, is it best for individual commissioners to reach out to you directly? Um, and, and I think it's perfectly fine to go through the planning director also, but I just want to make sure that there's an open door. Is that appropriate?
Absolutely. I, like I said, I, I am going to be the citing analyst on this project for this amendment request. So I'm the point of contact for all things department on, you know, the Department of Energy on, on this. on, on this um, on this process and this project. So absolutely, I'm available. And if there's any specific process-related questions that you have as we move through this process, definitely feel free to reach out to me because it's important that we get the information to you that, that you need in order to better participate in our processes as one of our special advisory groups. And according to our side of the record and our department, we have worked with the planning director Darwin.
Yes.
in the past. And we already have set up the the intergovernmental agreement so that, that planning department time spent on any information request that we might have about applicable substantive criteria or, or zoning or preparing comments for us is reimbursable.
Right.
by this. Okay, so, so we have those funding agreements already in place and with Lake County because you did participate in the original site certificate. And I, I know you're working on other projects as well.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, so, so we are, you know, like I said, we'll be looking forward to um, having that public hearing out in Lakeview. Um, but we're also, I know there's a distance, but we are available. So if we, you know, need to present at another council session or, or have um, more informal calls just to follow up on questions or information about it as, as we move through, definitely we're available to do all of that as well.
Okay. Good question. Kathy, uh, I gotta, it's a, just a general question. Is there anything to this amendment that affects adjacent landowners that they didn't feel they were being affected for originally?
Well, I can't answer that question per se, but I would also like to stress that this is a public process. So public comment is something that we will also accept, particularly on the draft proposed order. So if there are concerns by adjacent landowners, there's a way for them to participate in our process to make that known. And I think that is an important question, and it's something that we will probably want to talk about more as we get better information.
So I guess that's where we get the, you know, is if the plan changed and nobody knew about it, or
Right.
or it came to light late in the game, and it's too late now, or things like that, you know.
Right.
That's just what I was looking out for.
Okay, no, it's totally, it's important to us to, and just so you know, um, the part of our process requires the certificate holder, and if it's an application, they have to do it for an application too. They have to identify for us with the county, all of the adjacent landowners. And when we notice, we mail them a notice of this preliminary request for amendment. So when you receive the electronic notice through the email which precipitated this meeting, the adjacent landowners are all mailed a hard copy. And if they've signed up for electronic notices um, through our system, and a lot of them did with the, with the original application, they also get electronic notice like you did via email. So they have been noticed about this amendment request along with, uh, and in that notice, it lays out our process. It also has the link for reviewing the documents online. Um, these maps that I've shared with you are all part of that preliminary request for amendment. There's a figures attached to the, the document so that anybody can look at these and the attached information and analysis that they have provided in the full document. So, so it's all available now, and I think, you know, that's part of what we're looking for is input from the reviewing agencies and letting the landowners know that this is being proposed.
Okay.
So that they have an opportunity to comment on this amendment request. But I, I, I guess what I would like to say is in our process, we look at what the proposed changes and not reopening everything that was ever done in the past.
That's what I, I don't want to do. I don't want to give the perception that we're reopening the entire um, application or something, and I'm really...
Yeah, but there are changes, you know, and they're valid.
So like, one of the things...
If they want to ask questions, it's completely part of our process, and we're, we're look, we will look for that public input.
Yeah, that's, that's funny. There, just a quick comment and then a, um, a question again about the process. Um, I know there was discussion about um, maybe some different access to the actual site off of the county road to the north rather than the original one to the uh, east, um, on the east side of the actual site, um, which was very agreeable to us. And I, I think that it's reflected within the road use agreement that we've approved with...
Okay.
that they would be entering that project, the, the, the site itself from the north end. Uh, if you look at those two little chimney stacks off of the site, um, the, the smaller one to the right, I believe, is where they were proposing a driveway access at the top of that. Um, and, you know, that was very agreeable to us because it reduced the amount of traffic passing a lot of the residences on that northeast side of the site. And uh,
Okay.
if they were going to be coming in from the north end. So that was very appropriate to us. And that's just for the construction of the site, obviously. Um, going back to the actual um, amendment that we have here for both the micrositing corridor and the site boundary, what is the timeline for this uh, for the public pro, um, comment period and um, the actual, you know, final stamp? What's, what are we looking at here in terms of the final approval of this amendment?
I know that they would like to have this process completed and have an amendment, amendment site certificate before the end of this year. So like six to eight months from now, or from when they file it in the beginning of April. Whether or not that's achieved is very much dependent on the kind of input we get, the kind of questions that need to be answered before we can move on and prepare the DPO. So it's kind of this completeness review is what we call it of the preliminary and then the, the complete request for amendment because if there are data gaps or information missing, it's up to the certificate holder to provide that in their revise. And sometimes it takes a while. So I don't want to predetermine that this is just gonna be done in six months. It depends on the circumstances, but our process has some regulatory timeframe. So when they submit a preliminary, we have 60 days to come back and give them our list of um, additional, request for additional information. So if they submitted on 4/12, no later than 6/12, we need to return to them this... And that's part of what I'm compiling now, is this request for additional information in a revised request for an amendment. And then how long it takes them to pull that together. Once they get that back to us, we issue a draft proposed order in fairly quick order. You know, it could be like 60 days or less depending on how big the project amendment is. And then, once the draft proposed order is issued by us, it's open for public comment, we look for public comment period of 30 days is ideal. I think it's 21 by requirement, and sometimes maybe because of circumstances, it'll be bumped out to 45. But 30 days is usually our target for having it open for public comment. And so it gets posted, it gets, the people get re-noticed, and then we have a public hearing. And like I said, that will be in your area um, location to be determined. But that public hearing then pre, precedes council review. So we get public hearing, public comment. We don't know until that public hearing happens whether or not we have a lot of concerns and a lot of issues that are raised or not. Um, depending on that, how quickly council can review the draft proposed order is certain C of the like, as I would say. So, so there's certain timeframes. A lot of them are 30 days, 30 days or more um, in our process. And we update people along the way about, you know, what, when, and where. Average, I would say, it can take, you know, six months to a year to get through an amendment request. And some of that is just dependent on how quickly information that is requested and required is, is, is provided by the certificate holder and how complicated the change is. You know, the, the changes that they have requested include an upgrade in the transmission line to 138 KV, which requires different height of tower. Um, and also there will be more, this area here had previously been proposed as all underground. It'll come above ground right here. So that again is, is a change. So there will be change in transmission line kilovolt, up to an amended 138 KV. It was approved for 115. And that's the require, requirement for them to step up their energy to tie into a BPA line as opposed to the PPT.
That's why we're...
Yeah, there's some equipment change. And like I said, they haven't committed 100% to having a substation in this area E, that they're requesting. There's one already approved in the site certificate somewhere right here, and they want to move it, have the opportunity to locate it here instead.
Okay.
So, so those are the changes. And I guess one important thing that they did clarify for us in a recent call with them, when we told them we would have some request for additional information, is that it will be an either or. They will either intertie to Area Z and PDE and use this Area Z, or they're gonna tie in with BPA and have to get approval through this amendment to this. They're planning ahead. They want to request to do both. So it would, so there's some clarifying information that we asked them for that would like to commit to that. Like you're either, you're either gonna work over here, you're gonna work over here, or are they requesting the ability to work in both? And I think they're requesting approval to do both options with the intent of doing one or the other.
Yeah. I would imagine it's, if that's about them getting their purchase power agreement and being able to walk in and say, "We can do either or, so give us a good deal." So, and I would imagine so.
Yeah. And the capacity of those lines are different.
Yeah.
And so they have to have different equipment, transmission line, you know, components in order for them to get it there, to do that inner topic.
All right. Well,
All right.
Um, the only, I guess, just to answer one of your questions and then another quick uh, um, request. I don't believe that there have been any zoning changes in that entire area, uh, general region of the county for 30-plus years. Um, to my knowledge, or, you know, I mean, historically. So I, I believe, you know, currently between, not only between the, the, when this came about when the application was initially filed and present, um, but extensive periods of time that I don't think we foresee either. The other piece, and just as this would be a request, would if, if you could please, if Darwin doesn't already have it, please forward um, the outline of exactly what you had kind of laid out to us. Uh, the process and timeline for this going forwards to, you know, the 60-day periods, the 60, the 90 days that you would have between comment periods or with, with, with comment periods. Appreciate to have that kind of on paper so that we have some certainty and we can kind of have that in our head. When people ask questions, we can provide, you know, at least a, a fairly educated general answer. So...
Yes, and I, and I will make you aware of and be more than, especially if I'm still sharing my screen. Um, we have an awesome website. And on our website, we have all sorts of information about how we site, how our process works, about our council, our facilities that are under review. We have a project webpage for Obsidian where all of this information gets posted.
Okay.
And that's all the links in the notice that we send you. There's information about council jurisdiction. And if you go into one of these pages, this is the list of all of the facilities that are under FSEC. And over here, we have great, and I brag about, I did not create this website, but I love awesome websites and websites that have really good, useful information, like obvious to you, and this is one of them. So our resources are great. And all of these things are in here, and I will make sure, and I'm sure he already is aware of all of this information, but you can find out about our standards, about the rules that we follow. In those rules, we have, if I go to one of these, we have how you get an amended site certificate, which is in this Division 27.
Okay.
And it, it lays out basically in rule, state rule, our process. And so if there are time requirements, and thou shalt do this, about how, what our process does, it's all available in here. And, you know, I know you're busy people, but I just wanted to make you aware that we do have a lot of really great online information. If you're curious and you have a question about us, or you're looking at something and you're like, "Well, I wonder how that works." It's great. I use it every day to do my job. And uh, and, you know, the department has worked very long and hard to create this as a resource. I just want to make you aware.
Sounds good. I appreciate that.
And I'm also available to field any questions via email, phone call. You know, I'm, I'm the name on all the notices of who to contact about this amendment request. And so if there are questions in the future, please feel free to reach out to me. And, you know, we would hope that um, we can continue to have a conversation. And, and I'm more than happy to like work with Darwin, and then Darwin can be the point person to communicate with you on whether or not he thinks you need to bring me to another meeting. But I'm also available to, to, to participate in a meeting or a more informal conversation if you so desire.
Sounds good.
Okay. But I did get some good comments, and um, I will probably summarize some of these comments and try to follow up with Darwin and, you know, make sure that we're covering and capturing that information. Because you did just identify something that I have not taken that you'd dive into, and that was the, what are, have their plans for site access to get from one site to the other changed at all. I think that's an important question, that's a clarifying question.
Okay.
I just know that it's specifically noted.
All right. No other questions for me.
Kathy, I guess I'll ask one more question.
Okay.
If, if it's not listed in the amendment, it's not up for debate?
That isn't quite how it works. It's, it's that the, the facility, that the scope of our council review is the department that's preparing this document is the proposed change. So I guess I would say our review is more incremental in the sense that we, I'll give you an example. If someone has an existing site certificate and they're required to start construction in three years, if they come to us and request an amendment in order to extend or start data and construction, that is what we call a general reopener, and it reopens the entire project for review and comment. And so we have, we have to work through every single standard. Now, we still have to review every standard in an amendment request like this where they're actually changing the site boundary and changing the components within, in... actually changing the site boundary and changing the components within, in their micrositing area. So I would say we will accept comments on anything from our special advisory group. I know, and I did it blunt to make that, I wanted to make that clear. Like, we're not trying to narrow the scope of your comments at all. It's just that when we engage with the counties in particular, we tend to focus a lot on public services, like traffic, impacts to housing, workforce, you know, questions that they have about that, or maybe fire in emergency services, don't really see those changing, but that doesn't mean you don't have questions or comments about it. And then, the land use, applicable substantive criteria, zoning changes, anything that's happened. But like I said, with an amendment request like this, are, we're really looking at what has changed in factor law from the existing site certificate to what they're requesting to change in that amendment request. Because the facility is already approved. So like hypothetically, council could deny the amendment request, they're still approved to build the facility as approved in the site certificate.
Yeah.
That's an important clarification, I think.
Okay, that helps me. All right, well, any, any last comments?
I guess, did you, did you turn the hosting back to Melanie?
Thought I did.
Okay.
Hopefully, I have. I closed out of it.
Okay.
So hopefully, I like, I just have you all on screen in a little tiny screen. I'm so sorry, I'm just not at all.
No, that's fine. I understand.
I never use it. Sometimes WebEx is just clunky and then we use Teams all the time, so.
Yeah, I hear you.
So I apologize if I was not doing it right, but.
No, you're fine.
But I just wanted to thank you all for your time and attention today.
You bet. Thank you for making it work.
Okay.
Look forward to hearing from you.
Log off or Melanie, if you want to just kick me off, because I honestly, I don't know how to get out of here.
I think, I think there should be a little tab, uh, but, red button in the bottom right that just says leave, so yeah.
Okay. I will do that now. Well, thank you so much for your time and please feel free to reach out to me if you have any more questions.
You bet. Thank you, Kathleen.
Thanks.
Okay. Any other final questions?
It's okay. It's ended. You should be able to start a new one, right?
Well, I wondered what continues.
We're, we're going to adjourn me.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
So, the time is one forty-eight. And if there's no other business for us, we'll adjourn me.